Tonight. Yeah, no worries. Thank you, Hector. So I'm really, I'm writing this letter to offer clarity for our discussion tonight regarding staff capacity and city manager burnout. You know, I want to emphasize that I love working with the City of Talent. Um, I get to work in a place where the city council, the staff, the residents, business owners care deeply about the community. Um, and I just want to emphasize how wonderful and lucky that is to be here. Um, but I want to recognize that these past two years have been difficult. We have been responding to a natural disaster and a trauma. In these unprecedented times since the fire, we continue to deal with the impacts of the disaster. Um, we have processed four times the number of permits we would typically expect to see. We have replaced and reconnected ten times the order, the number of water services we typically do annually. And we're managing over four million dollars in grant funds. Um, that's really the amount of grant funding the ci- city would expect to see across a seven year period. But I want to emphasize that these are not typical levels of service for talent. Um, we are in a high level of service demand. And I do expect the workload to adjust to more typical demands over the next few years. Um, but in the meantime, you know, exhaustion and the continued high workload workload have placed me and my staff at risk of burnout. So the agenda topic tonight is to start the conversation about how we can reduce that risk. While continuing to provide the positive outcomes for the community that we all want to see. And I just want to thank council. I appreciate the council's willingness to engage in this conversation. And I really look forward to working together to figure out what ne- next best steps can serve the community. Um, and recognize this is the beginning of a conversation for us to continue to have. Um, so I just wanted to to submit that one to the record, um. And thank you all for, for those of you who I've talked to this before we scheduled this meeting, for your willingness to have this be a discussion topic. I really want to thank everyone. So with that, I will jump into the official staff report, uh, which will come in the form of a PowerPoint. Okay, let me, I'm gonna share first. Okay, are you guys seeing the full presentation? Fabulous. So as I mentioned in my letter, talent is right now in unprecedented times in terms of workload. Um, I mentioned to you in the letter, kind of some quantified evidence of how we are just functioning as a city that is three to four times our size right now. Um, and I want to emphasize this is occurring while sixty-seven percent. You know, four out of six people of our management team that's overseeing this work have been hired post-fire. And so we're all working really hard without a lot of background, um, to really try to meet community needs and help support the community's rebuild, which is going awesome. Um, but it is, uh, you know, difficult work for all of us. So I want to emphasize, you know, I, I do think this is temporary. I do expect demand for city services will return to typical levels in the next few years as our rebuild completes. Uh, but in the short term, you know, we are continuing to see a high level of workload. So what's the evidence where I know we're returning back to what we typically have? Our residential permits are really declining. That part of the rebuild has really come into an end. The projections of our water customers coming back really show us returning to the levels we were, uh, before the fire happening this coming year in twenty twenty-four. What we're seeing right now is this kind of our rebuild is transitioning to a new stage. Is we're seeing much more complex permits and complex planning requests coming in. So we do expect to, to start tackling more difficult issues in these coming years. We're really starting to address a lot of forgone maintenance. The last two years, we have been focused solely on helping people rebuild and get back into their homes. So now we're focusing, looking back and okay, how do we make sure our water meters are functioning for everybody? Make sure our streets are well maintained. We're getting back to that maintenance that has been on the back burner during our fire response. And the other major activity this coming year is really reassessing our finances. Covid changed the world. Alameda fire changed the world. So how do we know that we have that long-term financial plan? To maintain city health and services, um, for the decades to come. So because of, of the last two years of work we put in. And the, and the next two years, which I think will continue to be a high level workload, the risk for burnout was high. Um, my focus these past two years has really been to support staff and department heads. Because I walked in where burnout was so high that it was impacting city services. So we've gone from a forty percent turnover rate in twenty twenty-one, and we're down to a really healthy ten percent turnover, which is really what you want to see in an organization of our type. Um, my department heads, I've gotten them down to work in forty to forty-five hours per week on average, which is really important because when I walked in, um. A lot were exhausted is the best phrase to the word. And, and we've seen the quality of work coming out, um, improving. And I just want to recognize that we are, the workload is high. Like, for example, we've had a meeting per week for the last six weeks, and we'll have another meeting next week as well. So we're wanting to meet the demand. We're wanting to rise to it. And so the conversation tonight is how can we continue? To, uh, provide for our community at the level we want to provide. While also protecting just the work-life balance of myself in particular. Um, in focusing on this effort to stabilize our staff, I've taken a lot of the workload on my own plate. Uh, which is now leading to me risking in the burnout category. So my goal with this conversation is to get ahead of potential for burnout. Um, let's get ahead of it. So we don't come, or I don't come to a breaking point. Um, to really help just long-term consistent sustainability of our staff while we get things done. And so I'm approaching this, what do I mean when I say burnout? And what solutions have I been thinking about? Because city council did ask for me to prepare the study session to present proposals of how to address, um, kind of what I'm feeling and what I'm hearing echoed in my staff. This is my very poor chart, so I apologize for the lack of fun in it. But really, our issue right now is we have a super high workload. We have a much higher workload than we would ever expect for a city our side. So how do we address this workload, recognizing it's probably another, you know, two-year situation? You know, the two ways to, to decrease workload is either to reduce or slow down the number of projects we're working on. And or increase our staffing levels. Um, spreading the same amount of work across more people. And so the proposals I'd like to discuss tonight or present to you all tonight to discuss over the coming weeks, really focus on those two approaches to decreasing workload. Um, and so I'll jump into a chart that explains them more. But ways that we can reduce or slow down our projects would be to separate Tura away from the city again and have a separate entity focusing on that. We could refocus what our priorities are and try to accomplish less, um, though that one is always a heartache because there's always so much we want to accomplish. Or we could increase staffing, and I have identified some potential positions that could really help support the needs in the moment. One being executive system and one being a deputy. But before I dive into the details of, you know, the proposals I'd like to share with you all to discuss through to see what would work best for the city. Ultimately, I want to find the, the pathway that works best. Um. I want to just open up to questions about the core reason for tonight's discussion on this agenda item or any other questions of that nature. Uh, Mayor, I believe you're muted.
Are, are there any questions? Anybody? And I, I, it doesn't surprise me, Jordan, we've all had a lot of, uh, discussions with you about this and, um. So I, I think we're all on the same page. Is there anything you want to add, Jordan? After your staff report?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm, I'm grateful. Um, I have worked in places previously where this conversation is a, not a conversation that my supervisor's been willing to have. And so to have a, a board that's willing to engage in this conversation, um, is a fun and wild spot to be in. So, you know, recognize it's awkward in a public setting. Uh, but yeah, wouldn't want it any other way as we just figure out what's the, what's best.
Yeah, well, uh, I want to reciprocate by telling you that, um, it is a, a quality of leadership. To be able to come to your employers and express your concerns. In a way that allows us all to, to work together to resolve, uh, issues. And, uh, this is an important issue, um. Uh, for the function of our city, and you've been really, um, transparent about it, and, and it's enabled us to participate in, in, in problem solving. So. Uh, thank you. The, the, uh, the gratitude is, uh, is, is two-way.
Great. Thanks. Um, and I will say we had a, a speaker request form for tonight's conversation. Uh. And so I want to offer the opportunity if council is ready to hear their comments before I start diving into technical details of the proposals and getting the conversation going.
Uh, yes, so, uh, let's go ahead and call the speaker forward. Have them state their name and city for the record.
Great. And so the speaker request form tonight is from, uh, Karen Wheeler Clay. And I will let her take it from here. Though I don't see visually.
If somebody will set a timer for three minutes.
Getting the timer set.
I think that's, uh, is Hector still with us?
Hmm, he's sitting next to me. Jordan, I think you have to mute your. Computer. Sorry, we're getting the technical all set. Okay, can you restart? Thanks. Hi, my name is Karen Wheeler Clay. I'm the Executive Director of the Jackson County Community Long-Term Recovery Group. Um, our offices are here in Talent, Oregon. And I'm just here in support of this conversation. Um, you know, as another developing, um, leader in this community, I think these conversations are really critical. Um, our community has been through quite a bit. Um, and I was fortunate that my board was receptive to my need for rest. Um, in that it gave me the time to step away and really get clear about what we could accomplish as an organization. So this opportunity to really slow down in this time that we're coming together, um, after a pandemic at this really sort of sweet lull. Um, in the recovery as other programs start to ramp up a little bit later this year, um, is a really good opportunity to sort of slow down for careful consideration. Um, because you hired Jordan for a reason, right? Um, she is brilliant and capable. And her leadership can see this community through a lot. Um, so I just, I'm very supportive of this request. And I look forward to a really thoughtful conversation around this. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Any other request forms? Okay, um, so let's go ahead and open this up for discussion. That's what we're here for. Um, none of this is new to us, so we should be able to just jump right in. A lot of this is some of the, some of the same ideas that we were, we've been tossing around, uh, already. Um. So are there any, does anybody want to jump in? Count, uh, Jordan?
Yeah, if you all don't mind, I'd love to just present verbally some of the proposals that I have on the table. Um, these are just things thinking through with my staff, uh, around what could be potential approaches, just so that we all have the same definitions of what they mean.
Jordan, because we have participants with us tonight, I also want to just make it clear misinformation is a challenge that we have in talent. And, uh, I want to clarify that a lot of these suggestions are also suggestions that you've been working with the council on, and the council's been working with you on. So. Um, it, I think it's really important that we maintain, uh, that, that level of understanding that, that, you know, we've been working together on this all along and, and that, you know, we all share the same concerns. Thank, thanks, Jordan.
Yeah.
Please, please proceed.
Absolutely. And I'm just trying to get that chart up, and I believe Council Greider's hand is raised.
How's it, Greider?
Yeah, I have a quick question, maybe, um, Jordan, while you, uh, and it can also be answered after, um, you present some of the proposals. But, uh, I had, you know, we've, we've seen them, um, and most of them, uh, apply to your workload. And, and I appreciate that this, you know, conversation is based on that. But some of what you, um, just talked about and presented was, um. You know, things with permits and, and overall, um, city staff capacity. So I guess just wondering, um. I don't know, just trying to like, find the, the right, the, the, the right answer. And is it, and also I've been open, um, out on leave for a little while, so I haven't been as involved in this conversation. Um, but is this, are we, we're looking for answers specifically related to you and your job, um, and your capacity? Or like, you know, is this something that's, you mentioned burnout for, for other staff too? Um, and how does, what is the answer for them, I guess?
Yeah, sounds great. I really appreciate that question and, and thank you for asking it. Um, I think for conversation tonight, it's really focused on how to reduce my capacity. Or how to reduce my workload to increase my capacity to then support my department heads. You know, I've been really focused this past year on helping them with work-life balance because that first year, you know, we were all, you know, at work, working on the weekends, et cetera. Because I really want them, we have an amazing team, and I want them to stay a long time and, and enjoy life along with it. The caveat I want to say though, and is if that changes, if we get to a point where I feel the department heads as well as myself are beyond a sustainable moment. Um, that I will come back. Um, to having this conversation. You know, C- City of Talent is a small staff because we are a small city. And we are always on the precipice of if we lose one employee, that makes a really big impact on the workload of everybody else. Um. So, you know, my goal is to stay in constant communication with you all to understand where the, where staff are at. Um, right now, the focus is really on reducing my workload because right now I'm trying to carry a lot in order to help keep staff long-term.
Jordan, before we jump in, thank you for that, uh, question, uh, Council Greider, because I, I was going to ask a similar question, and I, I'm going to throw it out there, not for an answer, but just to say that. Um, I know that we're still hiring for community development and, um, uh, in a meeting that I was in with, uh, Commissioner Dottler. He, um, reiterated the challenges you've been reiterating that, that, uh, community development directors are across Southern Oregon are in short supply. So. Um, I, I was going to bring up that department as well tonight. Um, my hope is, is that we can maybe talk about that at, at a later meeting. Um, because one of the impacts that, that you mentioned tonight is, is mostly, I mean, in, in great measure hitting that department. And, and so, um, I definitely want to park that conversation if we can. And I'm glad that Nicole brought it up. And the other thing I wanted to say is you mentioned earlier in your, uh, presentation tonight. Uh, some key indicators that would, uh, mark, um, sort of, uh, recovery. And rightsizing our operation again. And I, I just want to reiterate, we've talked about this, uh, in earlier conversations that. Um, that, that, that we, I want to, I want to mark those for the record because I think there's, it's going to be important for us to, to either put in. Some time phased discussions, you know, like we'll talk about this again in a year or whatever, you know, set our calendars. Um, because I think, uh, rightsizing our organization is, is, should be designed in. Um, and, and should be benchmarked. So I appreciated that you brought, put those key indicators in. And just want to make sure that those are the key indicators you want to use, or do we want to continue to develop some of those? If, does that make sense?
No, it absolutely does. You know, I came in. My background and my passion, passion is in performance indicators for organizations. Um. It surprised me I have not been able to get to that topic, uh, largely because we've been focused on rebuilding our community. Um, but I know my finance director especially and I are really looking forward to in the next few years, having the space and capacity to be able to design those indicators. So we can really clearly communicate and understand, uh, what's going on with city programs.
Thank you, Jordan. Any other comments before she jumps into the? More of the presentation? Me, lower my hand. Okay, go ahead, Jordan.
Great, thank you. So you all should right now see a chart in front of you. This is my quick summary chart. There's a bit more narrative in the staff report. And these are kind of four, or I should say three, potential proposals to help reduce the workload, um, on my plate. You know, a lot of this, uh, I put it in kind of order of level of intervention. Um, in terms of the cost that would apply to the city. And the kind of effort and, and time it would take to make happen. You know, urban renewal, you know, the city took on urban renewal when the last executive director left. Um, really because urban renewal is doing such important projects, we wanted to make sure that they had, um, continuation. So I have some seamless continuation. And they also really dovetailed what the city was doing. You know, at the same time, uh, the Tura Board as well as City Council recognized that. Tura was in a state where it just was at a time where it could use more support and capacity, particularly from the finance department. Just to help, uh, keep that bookkeeping off of the ED's, uh, plates. They could focus on other things. Um, so I'm really excited that Tura is now at a point where we have built that infrastructure. We've built that stable base. Um, and we've been able to keep the projects going and complete some of the main goals from last year. Um, but it's admittedly taking a lot of my capacity. To continue the Tura efforts. And unfortunately, it's the most likely thing to fall off my plate. In terms of my priorities. So I'm also concerned that the output I'm bringing to Tura is not as high of a quality as I would like it to be. Um, and so I put two proposals up here, two approaches of how to reduce that plate. One would be to hire a separate executive director for the agency. Um. So that, you know, the benefits of that is that the work continues, that Tura is currently doing all the projects. Uh. Or another option is, is to sunset Tura, which is officially disbanding and closing the agency. Um, any questions just about Tura and how that may help or not help before I dive into some other proposals? Oh, Mayor, you are on mute.
Um. I, I'll go ahead and take Councilor Penomar's questions first, and then I'll, I'll go.
Why don't you go first? I.
I appreciate, um, that you provided these, uh, two options. Um, I just want to say, one, uh, we're not limited to these options, of course. And two. Um, one of the things that I read in your, was it, I didn't, is it in your report? I can't remember where I saw it. Um, that what you're, one, one of the, if we were to hire another executive director to, um, complete the projects. That we have yet to complete, um, that you are also recommending that we retain, um, the finance director with the city. We retain that piece of the contract. Um, and, and I appreciate that. And, and I very likely lean in that direction. Um, if, if that's where the members, the councils go, um, on this. But I also want to put it out there that, um, the Urban Renewal Agency ran with in a single executive director. Marla Kates for a very long time with a large project load. Um, and I think she did contract out some of the finance, uh, work. Um, but, uh, that's an example of variations on, on, on these, um. Suggestions that you're making, um, that I want to make sure that the council understands we have some flexibility in these. Um, I, that said, um, I think Tess has been doing an amazing job, uh, with our, with our finance. And I, I'm not recommending that or suggesting, but I, but I definitely want to make it. Uh, I want to put it on the table that while you've outlined four good, um, suggestions, and you've given us benefits and drawbacks for them. Um, that were, to make it really, uh, known to the group that we're not, uh, we're not, uh, bound by the, by these. So.
That is, that is, thank you there. And I just want to, you know, for the record, clarify, Marla Kates did have city financial services, uh, supporting. Uh, her accountings and the financial management policies for Tura.
Okay, um, I wasn't aware of that. So, uh, I appreciate you adding that in. Um, but what I also want to point out is that, um, you know, what we have left in front of us, um, is a, is an important body of work. But it's one, it's really one substantial project at this point. So. Um, again, I'm not suggesting or recommending that. I, I'm really just trying to demonstrate that we have flexibility in, in the choices that we make and. Um, and that they're not, we're not bound by these four choices. These are good, good recommendations. I'm not suggesting that they're not, but I, I just want the whole council to know that, that, um. Uh, what they probably already know, which is there's, there's a lot of options on, uh, available to us. Um, Council Byers?
Thank you. Just a quick point of clarification, Jordan. Um, and maybe everyone else already is getting this and I'm not, uh, I'm wondering if also these two additional. Options that you have yet to really dive into, if either of those avenues were pursued, if they also would help lift some of the terror burden off of your plate.
Oh, thank you, Councilor. That's a great question. You're reflecting in the moment on that. You know, the answer is. Yes, with more staff, you know, I could assign more tasks to them. You know, the thing I hesitate on is, is I still, uh, hold the accountability and responsibility. Of those. And so if I don't get the right staff in the role. It could simply increase the workload I'm facing to help manage and uptrain that individual. Um, so that's something I'm, I'm very conscious of. You know, I know I. When we, then when the city first took over urban renewal, we had conversations between the Tura Board as well as your city council roles of. Well, if Tura gets to be too much for city workload, you know, I could hire. A deputy or someone who could fill that executive role of Tura. Uh. And so I've been reflecting on that these past couple of months. But what it comes down to is, um. Is that it's adding just one more oversight position for me to oversee. On topics and admittedly Tura is dealing with very complicated topics right now, like running a gateway transitional housing program that is funded primarily through grant money. And through grant money that's running out, you know, Tura will continue to be a very complex topic to address. Um. And so I'd just be very aware that that's a, a continuation for the next year at least.
Jordan, I have another question about, um, urban renewal and, um. You know, it's we, as we think about how, you know, the ways that we can relieve the staff from the responsibilities of urban renewal without necessarily sunsetting it. The other area besides financing where, um, the city is impacted is in community development, right? And especially if, um, if the gateway project were to, um. Yeah, were to, um, proceed, uh, as, you know, per the community vision and, um. So I, that's another concern, like, like, I, I mean, I, I want to, I, I sort of want to hear from you a little bit about, um, it while, while. Relieving the executive director's work from your plate would make a difference in your job. I still see incoming work for the city. Um, that, um. The city staff that I want to have a better understanding of what your thinking is there because I, you know, for obvious reasons.
Yeah. So if we sunset Tura. The responsibility of, you know, oversight of the Gateway Transitional Housing Program and the final permanent development of the gateway site would fall fully on staff shoulders. Um. So that is something that I am, you know, very aware of. What would fall off is the administrative duties, the monthly meetings, the, you know, recording of minutes and running the smaller scale projects and programs. If an external executive director were hired, that would be responsible for those large-scale projects. Staff involvement would be that of if any developer, uh, were developing a, a large-scale property. Where we would be there to help work through the pre-application process to make sure it fits all of our city code, et cetera. We'd perform the inspections, uh, move forward that way, and would be much less of a burden as if we were running the, the development on our own. Um, if, if, you know, council or the board decides that sunsetting Tura is, is a route that you all want to take. You know, what I would likely do is try to hire an outside professional to take on that project. Um, since community development has so much on their plate right now with goals to accomplish this year.
Thank you. That's, that's helpful context. Um. Councilor Penomarif?
Yeah, um, the other, the other drawback, I think you mentioned about sunsetting Tura is, is just the loss of funds. Right? You said that, uh, funds would be diverted back to the tax. You said that uh funds would be diverted back to the taxing districts. Yeah, I think. It was less than a million, if I remember, eight hundred thousand or something. Yeah, so, you know, and a a portion of that would go to the city. But. Like a third or something like that. Um, so I mean, I think that's also as being, you know, good stewards of the taxpayers' money. I think that's, that's something also that that weighs. Um, for me. Um, but what I wanted to ask is um just kind of looking forward. Uh, with her, and you've already been answering this, but I want you to like correct my thinking. I tend to think in terms of the projects. And I think, okay, there's the RFP moving forward uh for the gateway development. And there's the Town Hall Project, so there's those two. And then there's also the transitional housing and transitioning over from from that to the RFP and the new project. And I feel like what what you've been saying, um, you know, is that. Uh, the, it's kind of like, who's going to project manage that? And the accountability that you have as executive director. Is because there's the accountability piece, that's, you know, that's the weight of it. Is what I thought I heard you say. Um. Did I get, did I get that right? And I'm just asking you to kind of just to clarify my thinking a little bit about um. About, because I'm also thinking about the the great work that, you know, Tom Humphries is doing for us. In terms of, you know, kind of um providing that expertise for the RFP. The hope is that we have really great partner that, you know, understands the community vision and and works with us. And so I I see that. In my optimistic view of the future as um as, you know, something good and fun. And uh, something that isn't um as stressful. As uh some, the work has been over the last couple of years. Um, so that's, that's, I, and I'm inviting you to just clarify my thinking.
Yeah, absolutely. So to give you all a a better understanding of the workload of Tura. So, for example, the Gateway Transitional Housing Project. You know, the, the original core belief that if is if Tura could develop that piece of property and we could lease it to a housing provider. They can run uh the Transitional Housing Program for us. Um, so we have done that model. But there's a lot of behind-the-scenes works that isn't aware of, uh, that does take a significant amount of capacity. Um, for example, the agency's original housing provider had to pull out of the agreement. Um, so then came the searching for a new housing pri- provider, uh, working with all the stakeholders, developed new contracts and grant agreements. Recognizing that the first round weren't exactly right for what we wanted. Um, taking on ownership of the travel trailers, it took about thirty hours worth of staff time to be able to. Title, register, and pay the consumer use tax on all of those travel trailers. We're still in the process of that. Um, getting our insurance updates. And then helping make sure that the program manager is help is keeping up on mowing and watering of the trees that the agency planted and invested in. And, you know, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that takes for running these programs. Um, another major example that's taking a lot of capacity right now. Which I love rain so dearly, but now I realize rain brings weeds, uh. You know, for example, Tura owns a significant amount of property. And so we have to weave in the maintenance and care of those Tura properties with city staff time. To make sure weeds are below that six-inch maximum right now. Um, and it does take five hours to weed whack one of our properties downtown because the ground's too uneven to use a mower. Um. And so when we talk about developing the gateway site. That is a major development project. And it's going to require a lot of oversight and a lot of involvement as any major development would would cause a need. Um, so while it's fun, I can't wait for it to be accomplished and to have that, you know, jewel in our community. It's going to take a lot of effort to get there and. My focus is so distributed right now across city needs as well as Urban Renewal Agency needs. Um, is that I'm afraid that I'm not doing justice to help support and move that project forward.
Just out of curiosity, Jordan, how come we're not caught, we're, our agency is allowed to contract that property maintenance work, are we not?
Yes, but I.
Just because you brought it up.
And it's uh hard to find folks who are available for mowing right now. So when we can't, I use city staff um to help make it happen.
Okay. Great. I just, I know that uh sometimes unions uh oppose, but I don't think that applies here. Into in the ur- ur- urban renewal agency, right?
No, our IDA covers uh city staff use for agency efforts.
Yeah, that wasn't my point, but I, but I understand what you're saying. Um. Okay, are there any other questions about um? The urban renewal piece here? Uh, Council Panamara?
Yeah, if I could follow up, so, and again, just help, help correct my thinking. Um, so as far as the, you know, the RFP, the, the new development that that will be happening at the gateway. Um. So how much project management really does the, this. The agency or the city um have to do if we're working with a a good partner?
Um, well, let me answer it a different way. You know, if, if the board, if the City Council is interested in in removing Tura from my plate. And if the board was interested in hiring an external executive director. You know, I would recommend a ten to fifteen-hour per week contract for that executive director to. Really fulfill and move projects forward at a healthy pace. Um. In terms of the level of effort. For overseeing a a project, I will point to West Valley View Road redesign. So for that project, we hired contractor Knife River to build it. We had RH two um engineering oversee as project manager. And then we had our public works providing support and our finance providing the grant administration and the finances for doing so. So even though we were, as city staff, were not the project managers. Even though we were not the ones pouring the concrete, um, it still required a daily site check-ins. Just to take record of what's going on. There were weekly meetings between the project manager and city staff, and then monthly meetings between the project manager, city staff, and the contractor. Um, so it does take, you know, staff time and as issues arise, decisions need to be made about what to do in those scenarios. Which then bring more meetings into our life to figure out what the best steps forward for resolution are.
Uh, thank you. That, that helps, that helps um fill in um some gaps in my understanding. Thanks, Jordan.
Yeah.
Jordan, I have a follow-up on that. Uh, uh, and you know, that's the purpose of this study session, right? It's for us to, because uh to to uh really flesh out these details. So I appreciate that we have the time to do that in study sessions. Um. So, um, you're, the suggestion is that fifteen to twenty hours of work uh a week. Uh, might be a good contract at this time, but when we get into the development of the gateway. Um, do you foresee that increasing?
I do not. I think ten to fifteen hours per week of someone who is solely focused on urban renewal projects. That that would be uh more than enough uh to project manage uh that project. Smaller things like the tree grant program or revi- revitalization grant program may fall aside for those peak time periods. Um. But I do, you know, my assessment is ten to fifteen would be plenty.
So, uh, your assessment is hiring an executive director at a point. Three oh essentially, um, or less FTE?
That would be my recommendation to the board. You know, I think there are folks in our community who would be very good at that role, um. Who would be interested in working that level of work because they want to move good projects forward. If the board wanted to hire someone at a higher FTE. I think they could get either the work done faster um or do more projects as the board would direct.
And uh, and so, um, and this would be. Knowing that we would have a contract like a contract with Tom Humphrey. So we're talking about a limited FTE with a. Contract with somebody like Tom Humphrey to run the um, the gateway project, right?
Run the gateway project or be executive director. You know, for my, the predecessor, John Magarza, you contracted his, his firm, so him through his business LLC. To be a twenty-hour-per-week executive director. Um.
Right, when all we had was the gateway on, on the table before the fire. Right, right. Um. So I did have a, uh, one more, one more comment um about this and I, and I want to throw this out. Um, as a possibility, so um with the gateway. Um. And with the peer funding coming in. Um, i- i- it, I, I'm not certain, but if I understand the way that funding could be used. Um. You know what? This might be more, this might be a Tura meeting discussion, but, but I'm wondering, you know. Uh, I, I just would say that I think that um the opportunity to finish a lot of that project. Um, originally designed by Tura could be possible and um. Uh, so if there were additional projects like finishing the road, for example, or something along those lines, um. Uh, that would just, that could, we, we could probably manage that work just by extending beyond, right? Staying at like a half an FTE and just extending beyond. That, okay, yeah.
I think so. And you know, I, and I will emphasize, if City Council. Wants to prioritize development of the gateway site, we as city staff could absolutely do that. We just need to remove other projects of priorities from the plate to be able to do it successfully. Um, so if we wanted to focus on going after funding to develop the gateway site on our own terms. Or, you know, hiring a developer to, to develop it, including the financial responsibilities. I know it's a project that staff would love to work on and could work on. Um, but it would take a lot of, you know, it'd have to be the one major project we're working on. Um, for the duration.
Yeah, understood. Where it could be the one project that I have to eat, FTE can work on. Yeah, I, I got it. Thanks. That, that gives me the whole picture. So thanks for taking the time to, to, to add that on. Uh, Council Panamara?
Yeah, thanks. So, um, looking at your roles, let's imagine that we have hired somebody. Um. For this fifteen hours and they're taking on the Tura projects. Um, so this person would be uh basically reporting to the Tura Board, right? Not reporting to you. So you wouldn't have that oversight. That wouldn't have to be on you, the bug stops here kind of mentality with that. Um, but you would still have to coordinate. Quite a bit, probably. So I guess, I'm guessing that's why the fifteen hours of their time correlates to. I think you wrote down six hours reduction. Um, in your time. Is it because of that, that coordination element?
I would say the reduction in my time, I'm spending right now. Roughly six to eight hours per week on Tura. Um.
You feel that's not enough, is that? Okay, okay, now I'm, now I'm, now it's adding up for me.
Yeah, so this is what, I mean, I think, you know, the end product would be better product for Tura. If it was on a separate responsibility.
Well, if I could just comment, I'm, I, I really get the whole idea of trying to keep track of more, you know, disparate. Uh, items is, is what's really hard. I mean, we talk about time, you know, constraints. But I always say it's not time, it's brain, it's brain constraints. Because I can only think about one big thing a week, you know, or whatever it is. But I mean, I think that's a very, a very real thing. And I, and again, I think it's great we're having this conversation.
Any other questions on these? Uh, really, we're just kind of focused on the Torah piece and, and we'll, we'll move on to the, the other two pieces here. If nobody has any further questions on this. Thanks. I mean, I, I, I just want to say, I want to respect everybody's time at seven fifty-eight and um. And we want to fully have this conversation, but I really, really value that um we, we need. That we are getting an opportunity to fully understand um the disposition of, of our assets, really. Um, before we make a decision, so um. It, it's uh been a very important discussion. All right, Jordan, if you want to go ahead and take us through the other two pieces.
Yeah, so these other ideas are, you know, the other side of that. Flow chart is really adding on staff. To help spread out the workload. And so there's really two flavors of staff, and I wanted to give you two flavors so you could just see the different spectrums. To, to kind of have the discuss, the discussion about which could be a good fit. You know, one is adding a part-time executive assistant to city staff. Um, I will admit with my capacity, so, you know, at max, what I fall behind on. Is my emails, my voicemails, so for, for those who, I'm, I'm trying to tell people to text me now because of voicemails I can't get to until about two weeks later. Um, following up on contracts and all the little tiny paperwork topics. You know, it's getting someone in to be able to take on that role and responsibility, so I'm not diving into those details and falling behind. Um, the, the other opposite end of the spectrum is to, instead of hiring someone that helps with the day-to-day work. Um, is to hire a position that really takes on a large-scale responsibility of the operations um of the city. And that would be a deputy city manager role. Um, with a deputy city manager role, I would recommend reducing me to part-time. Um, largely because one, town's budget would not be able to handle it. And, and two, it's really what it is, is we're, we're shifting the position into two separate roles. And really, I could just provide, I would not need a full workweek to be able to provide that support and that policy focus with council. Uh. And that would be, you know, the benefit to me is going down to part-time.
So a clarifying question on that, Jordan, is that um you would be reducing a full-time, the deputy would be, I mean, excuse me, to part-time. The deputy would be full-time. So are you, are you proposing in that item or not proposing, but are you suggesting in that item that? What, what that would look like is like a one and a half FTE between the two of you or? Yeah, okay, so there, that's, that's the additional cost, is that additional half of an FTE essentially?
Yes.
And uh, so did you do the math on that already? Because my, I, I, off the top of my head, that's not adding up really. That it would be a huge impact? To the cost?
Yeah, so the reason, the reason it's less than you are thinking, I mean, that's what I understand, is you thought it would be a larger impact. Uh.
I, I think it's lesser than what I thought I heard you say. Like, I, I thought I heard you say that um. That. Well, okay, so did you do the math on it?
I did.
Yeah, okay, so can you just, yeah, rather than?
Yeah. So this would be, you know, the, the position of deputy city manager being full-time would uh. You know, cost similar to what I cost the city. Um, probably a, a little less. I'd, I'd price them at the same level as our top department heads. Uh. And so where the savings come in from is if I reduce to half-time or to part-time, um. Obviously, my salary decreases, but also the benefit requirements that the city needs to provide decreases. Um, so right now, the city, for any full-time employee, we uh are required to provide a health insurance too. Which costs the city about thirty thousand a year per employee. Um, and so this, by removing that thirty thousand dollar requirement with my role. Um, that would significantly reduce the costs for adding a half FTE.
I mean, I want to ask you a question that I wish I would have asked earlier, but I'm asking now. Um, so we've talked about a deputy city manager before in months past. And, and um, I, I, I remember personally thinking about it for the first time in April of twenty twenty-two. Um, so. How? Why? So can you tell me what is different now? Like what? Um, w- was it your earlier consideration? Are there drawbacks that we're not thinking about, that we're not talking about? Do you know what I'm saying? It's like, um, this is making more sense because the workload is more uh obvious at this point, right? It's, it's, it's weighed down and we now, we now feel it, see it, touch it, all of that. But, but were there drawbacks that you thought about previously that were, that we're not talking about now? Like.
Yeah, you mean back in twenty twenty-two?
Yeah.
Compared.
Yeah.
So our conversations around hiring a deputy back in April twenty twenty-two was really. So our conversations around hiring a deputy back in April twenty twenty-two was really, our conversations we were having when the city was taking on Tura.
Right.
And so the conversation was, let's hire a deputy to step into that urban renewal role, if need be, and take on that workload. You know, at the time, I really wanted to better understand Tura, I wanted to um get in there, understand what's going on. Get a better grasp on what the books were, and so hiring a deputy at that time didn't seem right, since I wasn't so unaware of what was needed for that role.
Yeah, I think my suggestion was that we hire a deputy to take. Part of Tura and part of city manager, like a part of city, like it would be a dual role. For both of them, and I just wanna make sure, I, I just wanna make sure that. There were, there weren't other compelling reasons that you didn't wanna have a deputy that um that we're not considering at this time.
Yeah, you know, for me. The scariest thing about taking this route of hiring a deputy city manager. Is finding the right person to place their role. Someone who is uh very experienced, very capable, knows what they're doing, and doesn't need significant supervision from me. The risk that we roll the dice with taking this route is. If it is someone that needs a lot of supervision time, it will just make my workload and capacity issues worse.
Important consideration.
Yeah.
Right, I mean, that's a man, that's a management consideration always, is are you hiring somebody that's going to. Lighten the load in a short period of time, or is it gonna be a longer curve? I mean, I appreciate, and, and uh. Uh, the other thing too, I think that we all need to consider when we're thinking about hiring a deputy uh city manager is we. We're likely not gonna get applicants that have city manager experience, but will come out of a department perhaps somewhere. And have operations experience, and um, and in this really challenging hiring time. Um, do you have any concerns about, I mean, we've been suffering. Uh, like other cities, been suffering a great deal trying to hire, do you see any challenges on that front? That we should probably talk about?
Yeah, you know, I think. And I don't, I don't know, because I haven't, you know, paid close attention to the city manager hirings that are going around across the valley. You know, I don't, I'd wanna talk to some of my colleagues to see if it'd be more difficult to hire a city manager, or more difficult to hire a deputy city manager.
Well, that would be, that would be as a rule of thumb, right, because we're not talking about hiring a city manager, I, I'm. I guess I'm not tracking, is why I jumped in.
Yeah, yeah, so the only comparison that I have for what is the labor market for a deputy city manager. Would be to look at what the labor market has been for city managers, recognizing that it's a similar role. You know, my biggest, one of my biggest concerns, you know, besides supervision time that might be required if uh we don't get the right candidate. You know, this structure, having a deputy city manager and then a part-time city manager, is not a sustainable one for the city. You know, within two years' time, speaking of rightsizing, you know, that's too top-heavy of a structure for what talent needs.
Right, right.
Um, so really, it would either be this deputy steps into the full-time role of city manager, and I step back. Or it would be that they move on to another agency and we can right-size at that time. But this is, you know, a temporary solution for the city. And it's a question of, could we get someone up to speed to help in that small window of time? Um, and that really depends on, on the candidate, and I'm not sure what the labor market is out there right now.
So based on discussions that we've had and uh the comment and under men, benefits, where you talk about creating a leadership pipeline. Um, my understanding or belief was that that might be desirable for you, is that. I, I, I guess what I would wanna hear from you is, what do you see long-term uh for yourself?
Yeah, I appreciate that question. And you know. It's, I'm at a stage of life where it's very hard to predict uh what my next steps are. Um, I buy. My husband and I got married this year, like, we're excited to build our roots here, um, but I will be open and honest to you guys, that I, I. Do have ambitions to continue my career. And I really wanna see the talent community be at a stable, solid place before I go. Um, are we there yet? No, there's so much more that I, my department heads wanna accomplish. Um, but in terms of, you know, my long time, will I spend twenty years here? Um, it's a possibility, but I do also see myself growing into larger roles as I continue my career path.
I think we all knew that when we hired you, you know, we all know that you're, you're a rising uh talent and, and uh we appreciate that for sure, we wanna see that for you. Um, I, I just wanna make sure that uh the, the idea of creation, oh, a creating, creation of a leadership pipeline. Is really just an added benefit that you're, you're saying here, not necessarily how you see this going. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I mean, in my ideal world, you know, everything's daisies and there's no carnations, cuz those are less great than daisies. World, it's um, everyone would always love to pick and train a potential successor. You know, like, I truly believe in the culture that we have set as a team with a city of talent, I truly believe in the community goals that have been named. And I believe we're on a good path to achieve them. And so being able to play a role in helping. Develop someone who can continue that and continue those good outcomes would be awesome. Um, but I wanna recognize it's ultimately the, the council's decision of who they wanna have at the helm at any time. Um. And that this deputy role could be a trial process and trial period for making that happen. But it could come at, you know, very high supervision workload on my end. Which, in this exact moment, in this exact time, what I'm trying to do is reduce the amount of time I spend at work. To be able to lead a little bit healthier lifestyle outside of work.
Yeah, and I'm here, uh, you know, I'm hearing a little bit of mixed messaging, just that on the one hand, um, you're saying that um. This is temporary and that at some point in time, we're, you know, we'll be top-heavy and we'll need to, we'll need to adjust that. I appreciate that point a lot, it's a big concern I have. Um, about capacity building during an emergency and then having to right-size at some point in time uh for a city of six thousand. Um, but that said, uh, I, I, I think I've asked enough questions, I'll just have to figure it out, but. Um, I, I, I feel a little conflicted about what I'm hearing, just if, if that makes sense, and um. Uh, so, uh, but I appreciate, I appreciate your, your candor, um, Councilor Penamriff?
Yeah, I wanted to um extend the, the discussion about like. The oversight and the risk of not hiring the right person to the, the other potential. Um, hire, which would be uh the executive assistant. Um, I have a bit of a bias, I used to be one, and I think they're great. Um, so, you know, at, at hiring a part-time executive assistant about the uh degree to which you would um. You know, have more, you know, flexibility, oversight, getting the right person, recovering if the first person wasn't the right person. Um, I would, I wanted to hear a little bit about uh how you felt about that.
Yeah, you know, from my watching and other organizations, cuz admittedly, I've never had an executive assistant in my role. Uh. It really depends on my ability to let go and delegate to the executive assistant to fill that role. And I've never tried that in my life, so it would be a, a test of um. Wanna recognize that every person I've talked to who has one, says it's been a huge help in keeping their life organized and their focus on higher priorities. Um, but learning how to actually implement that. Um. Yeah, would be a new experience for me. I did try ChatGPT for one day and it, it didn't work for me, so. Um. You know, I think what I like about the executive assistant role is it could be a flexible role too. That where like my workload starts diminishing, we have so many in-house projects that they could be working on as well. Um, to move them forward. Uh, one concern, and this is a silly logistical concern, is. Where to put them if we were to hire uh an executive assistant, just given our limited space capacities in city hall. Um, but that's something that we could, you know, figure out if that's the route we take.
Cuz you'd see that person would need to, to be in city hall. Physically versus uh work-from-home situation, or you're doing a work-from-home situation kinda?
Yeah, I think it would be, uh, I'd have to think more deeply about how to structure that, I think we could absolutely do a work-from-home situation. But I also would wanna have a lot of face time at the beginning just to figure out how we best work together.
Right, I was thinking also, you could work from home, you know, and, and that kind of back and forth, but. Just as a possibility for the space issues and.
Yeah, I appreciate that idea. And I wanna emphasize with all these proposals, you know, these are starting places for the conversation to get going. You know, everything is on the table, if, if council has other ideas or other directions that you'd like to go in. Um, my goal, my personal goal is to be able to have a better balance of life with work. Um, a better lesson learned out by this fall. You know, so in the next couple of months, I would really like to. Pick a proposal and try it out, whatever it is, the proposal will be fixed, to see if uh that makes uh the burnout a little less.
So I'm, I, I want, can you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, I would like by the end of July, if we can, to say if we wanna take action on any of these items.
Uh, uh, so you. Okay, so you're saying you want us to make a decision by the end of July on, on, on one of these items?
Yeah. Yeah. You know, and, and one thing I wanna also just emphasize, put on the table is, you know, we could start small, try something out. See if it reduces it enough, and if not, come back to the table and figure out a next step. Um, I wanna recognize continuous improvement is human Sisyphean task.
Yes, well, I think we all want the same, I mean, we want something similar to that, in that we initiated this conversation, so I think. Um, I think we're all coming from and heading to something that's gonna hopefully work for everybody. Um, Councilor Penamriff?
Yeah, I just wanna express an opinion, if that's okay. Um, I, you know, I would feel comfortable even moving ahead with the idea of the executive assistant. Uh, looking around or even hiring somebody part-time um sooner rather than later. I think the other decisions are, are, you know, bigger shifts. Um, the thing I like about the idea of the looking for somebody who's interested and kinda starting uh doing this kind of. Bringing their professional expertise to a city, um, is that I, I think you were hinting at, it might be somebody who could. You know, fit in in a number of ways, um, and, and help with capacity in, in a number of ways. Um, especially if that person is a, is a flexible uh kind of person, which is kind of what I feel like. Executive assistants, again, my bias. You know, you have to have that personality trait to do a good job and to enjoy the work. Um, so, you know, I, I think there are some really good, important um. Uh, thinking and discussion that we could, we could continue on towards, towards July. But I would be um very comfortable, uh even just now, to say, go ahead. Um, looking for that, that uh kind of executive assistant type support. Um, as soon as you feel comfortable doing it, Jordan, um, I, I would feel very comfortable with that, and I feel that is the least. Um, uh, big of a commitment at this time, and then just kinda feel that. And maybe some of these other solutions would also come into play later on, but I just, I just would feel very comfortable with that, you know, right away.
Councilor Byers?
Yeah, Councilor Penamriff uh beat me to saying that I'm in complete agreement with Councilor Penamriff. And I think that testing this out and taking. The, the earlier step and finding someone to take some of those pieces off the plate, speaking from my own personal experience. It um. Sorry, my dog is making some noises, um, it is uh really. Just for, oh, even one's mental capacity, so helpful to free up just. Room there.
Your personal assistant could have been taking care of your dog right now, so you wouldn't be interrupted. That's exactly.
Uh, yeah, so I'm, I'm absolutely supportive of looking at taking that step sooner rather than later.
Jordan, if you did take a temporary, I mean, if you did, did sort of a testing ground on executive assistant. Um, which I, you know, I, I see a lot of, a lot of value in what's being said. Um. Even if it were just to offer you some relief until the end of July, my con, my worry would be um. Would you, do you feel comfortable that you'd be able to find somebody in that framework? That you, you know, you'd be, wouldn't you be literally hiring attempt at that point, or? I mean, what would that look like, like, let, let's ask ourselves that.
Yeah, you know, I'm not. I'm not entirely sure, I'd have to think through it a little bit, you know, I know workforce is a, is a good potential. To help find someone who could fill that role on a short-term basis, to see if it works out, if it's the right fit. You know, the city does have on, not retainer, but on contract, someone that can come in for front desk help. You know, when we're short-staffed or people are out sick, you know, I could see if that person could fulfill that role too for the month of July. I have to admit that I'd, I'd wanna give it a few, a little bit more thought on execution and ask folks uh who have um. Worked as an executive assistant to get some better direction from them, to know what approach to take.
Great, um, I saw Council Pestezo and then Council Byers.
Yeah, I just was in agreement with what um the last two counselors were saying. Um, yeah, I didn't. I didn't know that this would be, I guess I wasn't thinking of it as being a only-for-July kind of role, I thought we're. We'd go into it thinking it would be a longer-term role and then adjust as we may need to going forward. In, in my mind, some of the adjustment would be, you know, maybe adding more hours if it's going well and we just need more capacity. But I do think it could be challenging to get someone part-time to do that, but I don't really know. But it does, I would agree with the other counselors that this, it, it seems like the. The, the, the quickest bite at the apple. Um, and give us some more data essentially to evaluate what the best way going forward is. If you get the right person, you know, an assistant could really make a huge difference. Uh, it's, in my mind, so much depends on that fit. That was my two cents, thanks.
Councilor Byers?
Thank you, um, I, yeah, so I guess I was thinking of this as more like initiating the entire process of searching. For an assistant sooner rather than later, as opposed to saying, let's hire someone tomorrow and hope they fit. Um, and also thinking about it, again, uh, like, this is, this is a bit of an ease-in, looking at your outline. Um, of taking ten hours per week off your plate and looking at this as a part-time position, but what a great way to potentially test out a couple different. Um. Or not a couple different, to test out, say, an independent contractor, very short-term, and if it's a better fit. To offer an actual um position contract. And then, as Councilor Pestezo said, um, if there's still. As a need to improve the capacity that is on your plate. Um, continuing, I'm, I'm just thinking in like those incremental steps, instead of looking for the perfect fit for the perfect number of hours right out of the door.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and just to share. You know, with counsel of, of what my approach would be if we take the route of uh bringing in this part-time assistance. You know, as I would not look to make any budget changes at this point, that's not a large of a budget impact where I feel like we need to, to. Cuz we're, you know, looking at adopting a budget for next year right now. Um, it's something that once we figure out of, hey, this is the right thing, we do wanna move forward with this for the next year. We can come with a budget resolution. To make that adjustment, uh, once we know if it's a solution we wanna fully put in place. But I appreciate that feedback, and I appreciate everyone's uh, yeah, willingness to jump in and try, that is a very nice to hear.
Great, but, well, so before we move on, um. Great. Well, so before we move on, um, are there any other questions or comments? Uh, well, you know, it's, we're in a study session, so um, uh, we won't be making any decisions just for those folks who might be listening in, but um uh, yeah, I appreciate the idea that um, a solution is at hand without a, that, does it need a um, decision if you choose to, to move forward on that? So, um, that'll that'll uh, increase your flexibility there. And then finally, I do want to say, I, because I, I may, it just may be me, but I heard a little bit of a conflicting message when we're talking about the deputy about creating the pipeline and then also your career tra- uh, trajectory. I mean, only you know what, uh, what you want from uh, from your, your career and your personal life and the timeline that that, uh, that that may evolve um, to, and I, I, I know that we can trust that if um you, you'll let us know that at the time, if we need to have another discussion at a later time about creating a leadership pipeline, because I do think um, uh, whether we're developing people from within the organization or we're looking to uh, bring somebody in. I think the transition off of this, this high um, high-capacity operation that we have right now into right- sizing our community is going to be complicated, and I think uh, planning ahead for that is is going to be really, really helpful. So I just wanted to put that out there. I know you would do that anyway, Jordan, that's my experience with you, but I, I want to vocalize it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Um, right, so if there's no other comments, let's go ahead and move on to the next item. Thank you, by the way, for the great presentation. I really, I think we, we benefit greatly from this conversation.
Great.
So the next item on the agenda is the newest job descriptions. Uh, so we have two new jobs coming on to the, and or you can define that, coming on to the budget this year. Um, and uh, they are Community Engagement Director and IT Administrator Staff Report.
Thank you, Mayor. So these positions actually were made part of the budget last year, um, at our last fiscal year. Um, but recent questions have come up just to get a better understanding of what they do, um, so that council is aware and knows what services we're providing. Um, so I'll jump into first, Community Engagement Director. So this really, this position first came out through a grant-funded job for the Ford Foundation post-fire of our wildfire outreach coordinator. You know, the original intent of this role was to liaise with fire survivors and with the other recovery groups, specifically focusing on our Spanish-speaking communities. Um, when those grant funds expired, this position, you know, was hired permanently under staff funding um, with half of it acting as city reporter and the other half acting towards the city's communication efforts. So this year, the current year's budget, and not next year's, but this year's budget, uh, when we adopted it, we had split the city recorder position from the role and had community engagement step outside and really focus as a full-time position on communications and engagement. And really, the core purpose of that is we really want to expand and beef up our bilingual communication efforts as one of the core pillars that the city council um, set as one of our goals. To promote public awareness and understanding of our city's services. You know, to maintain, manage, and grow all of our content on our city communication tools, which we have more than doubled in the last year. Coordinate city events and coordinate our committees and commissions. You know, things I want to highlight of what this position has accomplished this past year. Um, we now have our first-ever monthly Spanish newspaper articles in Caminos Revista. We have an entirely separate Spanish social media that uh, mirrors our English social media. And we have Somos uh, Somos Talent, which is our Spanish version of the city's website. This position also built up cities' Facebook pages, which we hadn't had in a number of years, if not ever. And is really focused on doing video content is the best way we've heard from the community for getting information out. Um, the city's noticing list has more than quadrupled uh, since this position stepped into a full-time role. And they're also working on a standing, standard operating procedures for the communication tools, so that we can uh, have some legacy documentation. And so what this position, I really want to have focus in this coming year is I really would love to bring back our citywide survey, where staff would go door-to-door and knock and connect with community members to understand what's most important to them. You know, we want to host regular community town halls. We have a couple of really big community discussion topics that's on our goals list for this coming year. And then actively, we're working on a newsletter as a water bill utility insert. Um, before I jump into IT Director, I just wanted to pause in case you guys had any questions around the purpose of this role or what this role adds to the city or its history.
Counselor Penamorov?
Yeah, it's just a couple of um, clarifying questions. So um, so the recorder um, currently is a full-time position. Is that right?
The recorder we're doing she's hired full-time, half her time is spent doing city recorder, and the other half is doing translation interpretation services.
Oh, okay.
She's the one that's doing a lot of our Spanish content, um, on our various Spanish communication tools.
Okay, great. Um, and for the Somos Talent website, which I think looks really nice, but that's not it's not, um, it doesn't have all the content that the city website has.
No, it's more of a
A subset.
News, it's a subset. Um, we're looking at actually shifting away from Somos Talent um, to bring back into the city website side and find a, a better tool for outreach and consistent communication.
Okay, and um uh, as far as the noticing, you said that quadrupled, so what's the, what's, that's that RSS feed that I get? Um, is, uh, what, what is the raw number on that now?
You're, I would have to check and get back to you. I'm, I'm the number of folks that received notice of our meetings.
Okay, great. Um, and then as far as the door-to-door, did you say that we're gonna get back to it? Cause I'm not, I'm not remembering when we were doing that.
Yeah, this might have been a decade or so ago, uh, Jen Snook, when she was a, just a new police officer. She said every year they would go door-to-door, uh, knocking folks' doors, specific neighborhoods, and just saying, hi. You know, I'm Officer Snook. I'm just here to ask questions about how things are going and what you want to see in the city.
Oh, so the police department did that?
Uh, all staff did it.
Oh, all staff did it. Okay.
Yeah, but this was
Cool.
You know, people want me to say how many years she's in a city of talent, but it was a long time ago.
Okay, great. Great, thanks. Um, I guess just, oh, sorry, I'll let, I'll let Counselor Byers go, and then if I think of another thing.
Counselor Byers?
Thank you. A few things. First, um, I want to volunteer right now to participate in knocking on doors for that survey. If you need an extra set of feet. Um, second, I'm really excited to hear that there's, we're looking at a future integration of um, communications, so that, to me, that seem, that communicates that, like, all the communications are for everyone instead of like, this is over here for these people, and this is over here for these people, that sort of thing. And um third, I'm really curious to look at the core purposes. I'm wondering if, especially as we're beginning to see more diverse representation of news outlets in the Rogue Valley, if there's any sort of goal to do consistent communications with local journalists via press releases or anything like that, as I, you know, we're looking at overall community engagement and in the forming. Um Yeah, just, I'm curious.
Yeah. And I appreciate, uh, really appreciate you raising that, because that's just something I just spaced on adding to the staff report, because this position handles it so well. I really have to deal with uh, putting out public announcements and or coordinating media work. Um, but this position is the one that puts all of our, you know, radio segments. He helps coordinate and pushes information out to local media. Uh, so yes, that is a part of this role, and I will uh, work on making that more clear. And, and the nice thing that I really appreciate about this position is it helps talk through communication issues and communication approaches. You know, because I've heard from multiple parties, uh, different perspectives of, as you said, Counselor Byers, showing all of our English and Spanish communication in the same place to show, you know, uniting and, and that we have information available to all. But I've also heard from others that um, folks who are Spanish-speaking are more likely to get the information from a solely Spanish-speaking news outlet. Because that's their go-to daily consumption. Um, so I'm excited this position can have the capacity to do the research, um, to figure out, you know, here in the Rogue Valley, what is the best way to communicate things um, for the audiences that we're hoping to reach.
Counselor Byers?
Yeah, I'm just curious, um, especially as you're discussing like time spent in research. If you can speak to like, some of the strategic decisions that have been made as like the fire recovery process has continued and evolved. And when you're looking at this position that is so unique to um, talent and fairly new. If you could speak about like the strategic choices in that position evolution.
Yeah, well, I will say this position came directly out of city council goals. Um, you know, consistently, city council has highlighted the need for improved community engagement and community connection. And so this role is really the key active factor to help upscaling what we do. Um, in terms of strategic approach towards it, you know, we're all figuring out how to respond to this fires as we go, and a lot of it is learned by trial and error rather than uh, strategic, and I'm excited to shift from reactive to proactive as workload allows. Um but I do, uh, you know, see much more robust outputs of what we have now than what we had before the fire. And really, I place that due to this role, um, because they're able to focus on communications. And, you know, to be fair to this role, they are just now entering full-time work in this role. Um, the person that was hired was doing training of our city recorder uh, to get them up to speed, and it was just a couple of months ago that that full transition happened.
Thank you.
Um, Mayor, I apologize, but you are on mute.
I click it and uh, yeah. Um, do you see this as, um, do you see this position as part of the um, part of the um, capacity building that we're doing? We just, we just had long conversations about that in, in our previous item. Um, and, um, or do you see this as a forever role for the city? I mean, I guess what I want to do is add a little context to that question, can I? Um, you know, pre- previously, some of this, not all of this, um, for sure. But some of this was in a combined role with the city recorder. Um, in, in not, not uh, as outlined in the history that you have here, but uh, but, but actually, our long-term history is, is similar to um, how this started in that the city recorder also did um, some of the event, some of the city event planning, which um, which included the Harvest Festival and, um, and also a lot of the communication efforts. Um, I see this as much more of a robust description than I, what I recall they did. But um, but it was, it seemed right-sized at the time. This seems necessary and um, uh, given, given what we're dealing with right now and the, the workloads that we're all dealing with right now, all of us. Um, so do you, how, tell me what you see this, how this is in long-term.
Yeah. Well, in the, the five-year citywide goal-setting process that we did, you know, I do see that this position is key to accomplishing those long-term goals. Um, you know, something that government historically and currently is very struggles with is communicating to folks and listening to folks back, that we are just inherently a very clunky institution that makes it difficult for easy community conversations. And so this role helps change that for talent. Talent, one of our core values being having that full transparency and having that communication with our residents, um, to move forward together and have the outcomes we want to have occur. So for me, the, the long-term position of this role is if, if the goals that the city council stated remain the consistent goals over the next five to 10 years, that this would be a key implementation role that I would request of council. Um, if goals shift, if we're shifting more towards internal infrastructure, if we're shifting away from town halls and shifting more to what we typically saw prior to the fire, um, then I think this position could be repurposed to a different role.
Does this role have supervisory responsibilities?
Yeah, right now, uh, they are overseeing the city reporter, just in a support function, because that city recorder is part-time doing Spanish communications. So they're overseeing the Spanish communications part of the city recorder, and they're also overseeing a workforce intern.
So as a, uh, so as a function of what you have going on today, this per, uh, the, the role is serving in a supervisor role. Do you see this, I mean, you've got this as a community engagement director. Presumably, that's a department head. Do you see long-term this being a department head role in, in the way it's structured? And, and would there be supervision involved?
Yeah, I think for this specific role for a town our size, we would not need a robust department. I think having the one FTE focused on community engagement communications is enough. Um, for what City of Talent wants to accomplish. You know, I, I give the term director to it, because what this position does is so key to every single department we have. I need them to be in our director-level meetings, um, to help know what to communicate, to help clarify um, questions that they will receive from the public, et cetera. And that's why it's terminology does a director role, even though they don't have a formal team, like our finance director has multiple employees under them. Does that help offer clarity?
It does, and, and I appreciate it. I guess my last, uh, that I can think of right now is um, you were talking earlier about the outcomes that we all want to see, um, as a result of this and how this will, uh, this will support some of the goals that, uh, the council has been asking for, for a while. And um, those outcomes are measurable for us in, in your performance review. Um, I, I think I, I'd like to figure out how we could get some sort of, I think I've asked for this before, but I may not have been very clear about it. A bullet point of what those outcomes are, so um, as best as, as best as we can, so that we know this is a position on some level that we're really purchasing for the first time for the city. And um, we did it in a, an emergency capacity in the past, but as a new position with a with, that's coming out of a training role and into a full-time role, understanding what those outcomes are, I think is important for us to understand, um, because it is an expense to the city, because it is a new department head. Um, because it's not designed as a half of an FTE under the city recorder, for example. Um, and uh, I, I personally would like to have a handle on what those outcomes are. Do you see a, a tool that we could develop so that we understand, and not just this role really? I mean, I know what to expect generally from our public works and our community development, just, just, but maybe not everybody does. And um, so, I don't know, would we be using this staff or this job description for that, or the core purposes, do you think?
Yeah, well, just to emphasize, you know, as my role as city manager, you know, I, I manage staff, and I manage the administration of the city. But what I am hoping to provide to you all, city councilors, as the policymakers, is the metrics to understand what our output is and how we're serving the community. You know, one, and that's really one of my goals, as we had talked earlier in the other item, that's one of my specialty areas that I can't wait to dive into. But my capacity is such, I have not been able to uh, get to that point. Um, but would love to, to create reports that we can share about the services we provide to the community.
That's perfect. Yeah. Um, okay, uh, Counsel Penamorov?
Thanks. Um, so I have a question about this role and how it relates to your capacity. Um, and I understand that it is developing. Um, so as far as, it sounds like this role is, is responsible for messaging to the public, answering questions um, from the public, and that's why they have to clarify and, and work with all the departments, um, which is great, but um and this is not me being mean to you, but I, I seem to notice that you put your name and your phone number and your email out there a lot. Any questions, call Jordan Ruckland, and I, and I understand that that might have been specific to certain, you know, the situations that we've been in. Um, so I guess, do, do you see that? Do you see that shifting? Do you see that as, as impact, um, having an impact on, on your day-to-day capacity as this role um, ramps up?
Yeah, I will say putting my phone number and putting my name and email address out there is strategic on my part. You know, I am relatively You know, I am relatively new to this community. I want to be a point of contact for our community members. And really, I am the administrative face of the city and so I want to make that really clear to our community. What you don't see is behind the scenes is I get questions from community members or I get emails. From community members is I filter them through this position to find me the answer so that I can then respond. Um, so this position does support my capacity quite significantly. And, you know, we hosted particularly with the urban renewal vote. I believe it was three or four town hall meetings. Um, I did not organize a single part of those town hall meetings. I showed up and I gave the presentation. I claimed all the glory. But it was this position that did the noticing, that did the marketing and that did the actual setup. So I will say if this position were to go away, it would either A significantly increase my workload, workload. Or B significantly decrease the communication that we have currently with our community.
Thanks, Jordan.
Yeah, so what I really got to do is give a shout out to Hector for always claiming his glory. Oh, Mayor.
Are there any other questions or comments before we move on to IT? Uh, my, my last com- comment on this is just to be really, really clear that um we are, uh, our interest is. In um, providing, you know, budget for positions that we don't have a clear understanding about and having an understanding of that. Cause the community expects, expects that from us. Um, I, this position has evolved incredibly from our original vision. And um, and it, it, you know, it sounds very useful and helpful and, and um, but it's completely different. So having the deepest understanding thing that we can have. Uh, when a position is evolving or changing or being added on is really important to us, especially during the budget process. Want to be able to speak intelligently about what we're uh, what, how we're increasing our, our uh staff. And in what way and for what purpose. So uh, I really thank you for taking the time uh to to walk us through this. Um, IT is sort of a resurgence of an old role, so I look forward to hearing uh what the differences are um from, from our pasts.
Yeah, absolutely. So the IT director, or sorry, the IT administrator. Was uh brought on board within our formal budget at the same time as the community engagement director, which was last year's budgeting process. And this is, as the mayor said, an old role that we are coming back into the city fold. Um, the city of talent for a very long time had a part time IT administrator. Who just oversaw all of our servers, all of our equipment and kind of did the, kept the day to day ship running. In twenty nineteen, that person, that staff member left city employment. And so the city manager at the time decided to shift to a third party IT services in twenty nineteen. Um, so that was a, a contractor and a consultant where we would submit help desk tickets and then they'd respond to it. And what we really found, particularly post fire, is that. One, we weren't keeping up with infrastructure or sorry, with industry best practices. For governments, because we didn't know that we were supposed to be seeing the IT consultant for certain things. Uh. And that two, we were having a significant delays on the help desk tickets we were submitting. Um, so it's starting to really impact uh productivity of staff, because we were having to wait for equipment to be repaired to be able to continue our day to day work. Um, so I was really excited to bring in this IT administration position into the budget last year. It was a very long hiring process. We didn't get someone in the role until about four months ago. Um, and it has been so awesome to have this position filled. They have already um started inventorying all the equipment we have. They're creating this equipment replacement schedule. Um, they are working right now to transfer us away from our contractor to our own in house. And they're really focusing on our cybersecurity and getting us back up to those kind of state regulated standards that are um. Recommended for cities our size. Um, in terms of the long term vision for this role. You know, because the city has been kind of delinquent and not keeping house with our IT infrastructure, I do see this as being a one to two year full time role. To get us back to the integrated systems uh that we want to have. After that, it can drop down to a part time position, because at that point it's more just maintaining um the systems that were put in place. And so that is my IT admin in a nutshell. And of course, this is the area I know less about technically, so it's harder for me to put into words.
I have, uh. Okay, I'm not muted. Um, I have um quite a bit of memory of uh our previous IT and I. I do, um, I do recall that it was like really um. Uh, revolutionary for, for, for the staff when she, when she came on board and and what a difference it made in the operation. Um, I, um, but I also recall, you know, the idea of going over to a contract. Um, was, was really, really sold to us as being an opportunity to. Um, uh, you know, be more efficient, save, save money for the city, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I'm a believer in paying for efficiency. I think that that's important. Um, and it sounds to me from your view that that's really what we're gaining. Just out of curiosity, uh. Were we saving money with the contractor? It didn't, it just didn't seem like we were.
We weren't. So we were the very first year. Um, but as we add on more services, as their rates increased and as um. Our IT needs increases, things started breaking down more because they weren't being, you know, kept up the standard of having an IT person in house. It got beyond what we anticipated the cost to be. Um, so yeah, so at that moment in time, as I, you know, as I've seen in my work with City of Portland. My experience is usually you bring in a consultant, you bring in a contractor. It works really great for the first year or two. Then you start using control of costs or using control of product and I think the city was just at that point.
Was the previous position a part time or or a full time FTE?
It was a part time FTE.
Um, so, um, in one to two years, you see this going as an uh, uh, part time. Do you think that there's any reason why we would um need to hybrid that position for any reason? Or would it just be strictly states keeping the services still in house? Um, and just with a part time person?
Yeah, I think, you know. We could either go part time in house. We've also had conversations with Phoenix. The city of Phoenix is very interested in sharing an FTE. Down the line, who can provide IT services to both our cities. Um, I know historically, we've also contracted with Central Point, you know, for their IT team. So I think once, for me, once we get where we want to be with our systems. And with their IT approach, I think it opens up the world to some economies of scales that we can have. Um, and reduce the, you know, budget ask of this position, because we honestly won't need much support. Once the system's in place.
That's really thoughtful. Uh, Counsel Panamarev?
Yeah, I agree with the thoughtfulness. Uh, the only concern I would have is if we're looking to share um staff. Um, regionally, it would be nice to be using the same software. And and hardware, so there is that consistency. Um, and I just want to express a little dismay that um. That when we went to, you know, a professional contractor that uh. We actually stopped, you know, that, that there was decline in best practices, because it's, it's supposed to work the opposite. Um, anyway, uh, yeah, so, so that's, that's my two cents. Sounds great.
Yeah, you know, I think, and I want to say something about having a tech contractor, tech consultant. Is, you know, since we, none of us were tech experts on staff. We didn't know what we should ask for to make sure that we were getting the services that we needed or the upgrades we needed. You know, we were on a fee for service basis, so they would only do the work that the city requested. Um, so it's really nice to have that expertise back in house that we can ask all the questions to, as well as have us reset our email passwords. Uh. When we forget those ones post vacation.
You don't know what you don't know. That's true.
Yeah.
Well, I, any other questions? I don't have a lot of questions about this position, because truly my recollection is that when we had uh the previous IT person. Uh, she was great. It, I never heard any complaints about. You know, anything, and that was not the case when we had a contractor, you know, there was just constant issues and. Um, so some, some, some even that I had, um, so really. I, this is money well spent, in my opinion, uh, especially if it's less money than the contractor, so. Any, any other questions about this position? Well, good. All right. Well, thank you for taking the time to walk us through this. Again, it's really helpful when uh, when we're getting, we're seeing new stuff on the budget that. We want to be able to understand it as well as anybody uh in the operation, so. Um. So with that, if there's no other questions, I'll go ahead and move us on to. Probably the end of the agenda and to get there. Um, yep, so that's a adjournment time. Um. Again, no decisions are made in a study session for those who are observing. Uh, we appreciate, uh, Jordan, you're taking the time. Uh, to help us understand all of this better and um, we have a lot to think about and um. Uh, you know, we're having this conversation because we value uh what you bring to talent so much. And um, and we're really grateful um that we have an opportunity to explore. Explore solutions, so. Um, if there's nothing else, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting at eight fifty, at eight forty four. Thank you, everybody.
Great. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you, everyone.